Jamie, I think everyone's here.
Okay, are we doing this as a meeting? Or is this just an informational?
This is a meeting with call to order and everything.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Um, should we have an agenda?
We do.
Okay. I thought this was just a special informational. I didn't realize.
It's under the public meeting.
Is it public meeting? You should've got the email. With the public. I did. I would use that. This is our agenda.
This is our agenda. Like, official.
Yeah. Yeah, but being it was called a workshop, I didn't know that it was an official.
We have to, as a public open meetings law?
Sure.
We do. All right. Then I'll call this Planning Commission Workshop to Order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ponge to the discussion.
All righty. So we have this one, the individual planning commission, that I have not seen before, but I've John DeBorno, the county planning director. So I've been in this room for several hours now, and when I first got here it was 85 degrees, so the air conditioner was broken. So you guys all lucked out. As this council is wrapping up, they fixed the AC, so we get to be nice and comfortable in here now, which is great. So we have this workshop to cover some of the preliminary changes and discussions that we are having with the consultants on the RECODE project. And again, this is the substantial rewrite of both the zoning code and subdivision code, which should be more appropriately called the land development code. So today, we are going through some of the Module One material, and the rewrite itself is broken up into four different modules, so this is the first step of four. And this is a huge chunk. So as you can tell from all the material that you received, it's taken staff hundreds of hours to go through that stuff. It's taken the consultants as much time to create it. So there is a lot. So the purpose of this workshop is to not get into the nitty-gritty weeds of individual words. There'll be plenty of time for that as we get closer towards the adoption stages at the very end. But we wanted to bring you guys in, to bring you up to speed on where we're at, some of the, you know, 30,000-foot level changes that we're discussing with the consultant and what they've brought to us so far. So all of this is draft material. It's subject to change in between now and when I speak to council on this in two weeks, and change after that, and change all the way up until we get to September and we're getting down to the final meals in the coffee. All right. So the contents for this presentation, I'll go through what's in Module One so far. So it's going to be the base districts, the special districts, the overlays, the one legacy district that we have, U-D. Then we'll also go through uses, talk about the use table, how it looks today, and what some of the changes to that are going to be. And then also get into the use regulations themselves. So that's both special exception uses, conditional uses, accessory uses, temporary uses, all of that. So first, we'll cover the base districts. So we'll cover these by topically, and as you have questions or comments, I'll stop at the end of every slide basically. So these are the more rural and agricultural districts. So we have AGC, AGC-1, RUD, RUD-1. So based on feedback that the consultant received early on in this process, they have proposed consolidating AGC and AGC-1 into just a single AGC district, and the same for RUD as well. There's really just not enough difference between the ones and the base to justify having an entirely separate district, so that's what they have proposed to do there. They've also proposed to add a new Parks and Recreation District, will be PR. So that's intended for areas that are going to be conserved. We have many of those areas across the county already. They have conservation easements on them, and they're never going to be anything except for what they currently are. Also in mind for this is some of the county's parks. So Riverman Park, that will be developed in the future as a more expansive park for people to enjoy. That would have this designation. And also the thought is to have all golf courses have the PR district. So that way, when the golf course eventually goes away, as the trend is more and more common, it's not a default zoning that is more onerous to the neighborhood than what.
You don't end up with Regent Park.
Yeah, exactly. There's plenty of that going on in Fort Mill as all the golf courses start to go away. So, and, sorry, I said I would stop, so any questions on those, comments on those? Okay.
Actually, just real quick. So just the PR, that is separate. That's not like within a neighborhood? Small portions couldn't be PR?
Correct. Those would be more accessory to the neighborhood. So you can have your pocket parks, your neighborhood parks, that kind of thing. It wouldn't need to carry the PR designation. Okay. And getting into some of the residential districts. This is, all of these districts are largely going to remain unchanged. There were some changes with the open space and conservation ordinance that we went through with you all a couple of months ago. That has since been adopted by county council. So that changed the base lot size for all of these residential districts. And that was in anticipation of making the naming convention for these residential districts make more logical sense. Right now, you see RC-1, RC-2, RD-1, RD-2. We have no idea what those mean just on face value. But now, the proposal from the consultant is to rename all these districts to the one that's below. So RC-1 would be RSF-40, or Residential Single Family 40,000-square-foot Lot. So it's pretty logical to follow that. And then thereafter, you start to get smaller and smaller lots. So Residential Single Family, 30,000-square-foot lots. Residential Mix, so not just single family, there's going to be duplexes and that other thing, and other things like that. So that would be Residential Mix 20, 20,000-square-foot lots. And then Residential Mix 10, 10,000-square-foot lots. They've also proposed a smaller district than that at the RMX-6, or 6,000-square-foot lots. So that's designed to have quadplexes, apartments, that type of thing. So any questions on those?
Why are we creating a whole new district for higher density than what we already allow?
Yeah. And part of the reason for that is council has been concerned about having apartments fall in BD-3, right? It doesn't make a whole lot of sense, even though apartments aren't commercial. The areas where you want to have BD-3 aren't necessarily the same areas that you want to have apartments. So the thought was to create a new district where council would have control over where some of those higher-density uses would be permitted. Because they wouldn't exist when this would be introduced and adopted. There would be zero areas in the county, at least initially, that would be zoned RMX-6, so therefore council would have to approve any that would come in. And it would go through this body.
And are apartments allowed in any of the others, or the mixed, the RMX-10 or 20, or no? Is that the only place you would be?
That's in draft right now, so I believe the consultants had proposed apartments to be located in RMX-10 and RMX-6, but we had told them that that might not be the direction the county council, or that the planning commission, might be interested in going. So if you have thoughts on that, whether it's appropriate to have apartments in RMX-10 or exclusively in RMX-6, I mean, that's feedback we'd love to hear.
Can, can there be a, instead of having an RMX-6, I think the concern is that, you know, it's proposing 6,000-square-foot lots, which we just worked to eliminate. And so now, they're proposing it right back again without any consideration for what we just did.
Well, we didn't get rid of the 6,000-square-foot lots. We got rid of the 6,000-square-foot lots being able to be achieved just through water and sewer. So now you have to do the additional open space to get that small. So this is proposing a new district that would have at a base level 6,000-square-foot lots, but like I said, there wouldn't be any of that existing today. So they would have to propose a development that, you know, met the satisfaction of the planning commission, that met the satisfaction of the council, to be able to be approved and come in. Okay? Any others?
I would just say, I kind of agree with the, you know, where you were saying that RMX-10 may or may not have apartments based on kind of where we've been going. I think where we've been going would be if you're going to create an RMX-6, that would be where apartments would be allowed. You'd take them out of RMX-10, or just leave them in RMX-10, but get rid of RMX-6. I don't know that you need, yeah, to double dip on that.
Okay.
It's just my thought.
Sure.
I don't know where everybody else stands on that, but.
That's why we're here, to get some of that early feedback.
Yeah. I think that's just one of the things that they've been kind of working on at council level and through commission, is trying to kind of target where that goes.
Right.
And not opening it up to extra areas.
Right. Good. Similarly, with the commercial districts, there's a naming convention problem right now. Right now, you look at it, see BD-1, BD-2, BD-3, and you're assuming that it's an escalation of the intensity of the commercial product that's available in those districts, but it's really not. So BD-2 is a different animal from the other two. So they're being renamed, or proposed to be renamed. So NC would be Neighborhood Commercial, so that's going to be your smaller-scale stuff. BD-2 is Office and Institutional, and then BD-3 would be your General Commercial. And then they are also proposing two additional new districts here as well. So the thought was to create a rural neighborhood commercial, so something commercial that would fit in a rural environment. So something like a Tractor Supply, or something like that would be very common. Because otherwise, you end up with vast swathes of the county that if you want to do anything commercial at all, we're talking about a potential spot zoning situation where there's really nowhere to put it. So this has, allows those commercial opportunities on a much smaller scale that fits with the rural environment. The other one there, OA, with the outdoor amusement, and this is a unique animal that's really just for car rentals. So they have a lot of different land uses, and that existed before zoning, so it kind of creates some problems. They've got a lot of, you know, grandfathered uses going on there, so the thought was to clean that up, have them have their own district, and if we ever had another steam park they wanted to locate elsewhere in the county, that's quite unlikely. But in the eventuality that that could happen, now we have a district where all those uses could fall. So any comments on those?
Would that outdoor amusement apply to something like that water park that was proposed on Rambo Room?
That's probably more outdoor.
Outdoor recreation.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is large scale. This is big. So, yeah, it wouldn't go there.
So I was taking those, OA was Office and what?
Institution.
Institution, thank you.
So does the RNC encompass essentially NC and OA?
No.
So if you think of it on the scale that NC and GC fall under, Neighborhood is the smaller scale, and GC is the larger scale commercial, RNC would be on the left of NC. And there'd be some uses that would not necessarily fit in the neighborhood, but because you're in a rural area and you might have neighboring farms, you would have some uses that fit in RNC that don't fit in NC, if that makes sense. Then for the industrial districts, there's no change to LI and ID. Those actually make sense. So no need to change those. They did propose an additional industrial district, so the Rural Industrial District. So again, we're talking about in the rural areas, because we always have this problem where we've got urban areas in the county, we have a lot of rural areas in the county. And the rules don't necessarily make sense when we're applying across that spectrum. So the thought is to create this rural industrial so that you can have some of those industrial uses that fit in the rural character, and we're not worried about throwing out a power plant out in the middle of, you know, the rural environment. Any questions on those? So we'll talk about special districts next. So today, we have but the two. So we have TND, which is Traditional Neighborhood Design, and PD are planned districts. So they are proposing to rename, and this was actually our suggestion, because we only have the one TND, so the thought was just to give Baxter Village its own zoning district. So, you know, we know it's not broadly applied anywhere else, and the thought was to just leave that alone. It's a very long laundry list of regulation in there, and it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to change anything in there, because Baxter is largely built out, and we don't want to create non-conformities. So it's just a renaming effort there. Planned development, we'll get into that in a second. And then we've got two additional special districts. So we have the Business and Technology Park. This is a new district that came about as part of the recommendations from the I-77 South Small Area Plan. So we'll get into that in a moment as well, and then also mixed use, which the county has needed for quite some time now. So the way this is structured in the zoning code is there is a set of regulations that apply to all of these special districts. Doesn't matter which one you're applying for. You, at a base level, need to have a site plan, you need to provide open space, you need a master landscape plan, you need a master sign plan, a master architectural plan, parking demand study. You need to make sure you have internal connectivity, both roads and sidewalks. And you need to have a master lighting plan. You have to have connection to public water and sewer, and you have to underground your power. So all of those apply to all four of those special districts. And then it breaks down after that, that each of the remaining other three, because again, Baxter's his own thing, have standards that apply only to them. So first, for the BT districts, so this is really trying to create that, not the 80s office park where it's just a bunch of office buildings and nothing else. You want to have those complementary uses that are sprinkled throughout. So you want to be able to go to work, and stop and get lunch, and sit outside, all in the same environment, and not have to drive out and create more trips. So that's the intent behind the B and T. So some of the standards that apply exclusively to BT would be a minimum of 20 acres, so you don't want a just a couple of different employers. You want a whole park, so it's cohesive, and it's synergistic, and it can be successful in that way. Also has a minimum of 50% of the building, GFA, the gross floor area, must be for employment uses. So again, we're not just having folks come in and we're just going to build shopping centers, or we're going to build a whole bunch of residential, because there's a small component that can be residential in this district. Really, the driving force is to bring in employers. So that needs to be at least 50%. So the other components can be supportive commercial, retail, service uses. So when we get to the use table later on in this process, you'll see where some of those uses make sense, that they're complementary to employers. There's also a maximum cap on the amount of land area that can be used for warehousing. That's an issue that we've heard loud and clear with council. We've passed that along to the consultants on there, so that when we have these districts that come in, they're not just going to pluff a whole bunch of warehouses, say, we're employment, and then we're done. We want a maximum cap on that. And the same cap applies for residential uses, so you want to be able to have some perhaps upper-story residential, so that you can have some employees maybe live onsite and make their commute even less, fewer trips. The maximum residential density that can be in these districts has to be equivalent to RMX. They have two on here.
That was my question.
So it's probably 10.
There's 10, 20, and 6.
Yeah. So I made that, I added a 1 instead of a 0, so apologies for that. Then there is a step-down height requirement, so right now, the county-wide height limit is 50 feet. So this district, you are able to go higher than that, because they're proposing their own standards by and large. But we want at the perimeter, the height limit to be 50 feet. So if I've got a community that's nearby, I don't have a skyscraper next to me, you know, there's a step-down effect. It also has to have access to a major collector, so we're not overburdening minor roads with excessive traffic for major employers. And they're also required to have a transportation demand management program. So these are things that are, after they're onsite, they need to incorporate things like flexible work hours, van pooling, so that you're further reducing the trips that you produce beyond just what your uses propose and the infrastructure that will be provided onsite. And then mixed use.
What was RMX-10, though? It's supposed to be 10 market.
I think so.
Yes.
For mixed use, those can be a little bit smaller, because you want to have, instead of, you know, your traditional 60s and 70s strip centers, you want to be able to have small pockets of mixed use in areas across the county. But because these districts will also allow single-family residential, if you're going to include single-family as part of your mixed-use proposal, then your minimum becomes 20 instead, because those are going to absorb more land, obviously. So they need to have a minimum of 25% of land area for residential. So again, the mix, the purpose of the mixed use is to have that true mix of residential and commercial. So that's why there's a minimum for residential here, and there's a maximum for what your single-family residential could be. So that, if you've got, you know, 100 units of residential, only 50 can be single-family. We also have a minimum 30% land area for non-residential uses. So not only do we want to require the residential, but you also want to require the commercial. So you got to make sure that you have minimums, and you're going to have more in one and more in the other, but you want to have, make sure that there's at least a balance for every mixed-use district that comes in. There's also a requirement that at a minimum, 25% of the ground floor, non-residential uses must be active. So that's things that are getting people in and out of the door. So it's not just, you know, a tax office that's only so busy for a couple of months out of the year. You know, it's going to be spaces where people are going to be going in and out of all the time.
Co-op shop.
What's that?
Co-op shop.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. So you really want to keep that foot traffic moving so the mixed-use district can be successful. And again, similarly, there needs to be an access to a major collector or higher. If you have single-family, the blocks need to be between 400 and 600 feet, so you don't have long, endless roads of residential that wrap around, so you have to break them up in blocks. The buildings need to be oriented to the pedestrians, so that is the key to making mixed use work, is you really got to have all those people walking around. So if you don't have buildings that help people walk around and access to all the different buildings in that district, it's not going to work. So that's why that's a requirement there. An additional part of that is there needs to be a 14-foot active pedestrian zone. So that's in between the building and back of curb. There needs to be 14 feet of stuff in there. If you want to do active amenities for pedestrians as they walk by, outdoor furniture, that's a popular thing, street trees is a popular thing, landscape panels to make it pretty as people go through, all of that can fall in there. Then there is a requirement to have parallel parking in the non-residential areas. Any questions on the special districts?
I thought the general intent was to eliminate PDs altogether. And I know there's a certain number on the books here in the county, just kind of work with those, but it's not intended to create new PDs, right?
Well, I don't think we can technically get rid of PDs. But I think the thought is that if we have more options of these special districts, we're less often going to get people just applying for them. Oh, I'm, you know, I can't do this otherwise, so I'm just going to do a PD, because I can do whatever I want in the PD. So most proposals should fall, my assumption is, in the mixed-use category, so we'll probably see less PDs overall. And I agree with you, they are problematic, and if they come to us with a PD that we think fits squarely into mixed use, that'll be our suggestion. We should go forward with the mixed use. But unlike before, or currently, where we don't have a lot of protections for a PD, so again, all of those requirements that apply to all districts, we don't have a lot of that today. So even if we do get PDs, they will be vastly improved over the ones that we've seen and approved in the past.
The two new ones, BT and MU, do those directly correlate to anything, or if somebody wants to do that, they're going to have to rezone?
Have to get rezoned.
They would have to rezone for those two.
Yes.
And like the other new districts, this applies to any of the new districts. They're largely not going to exist, other than, you know, county council may choose to actively rezone some existing property. When they adopt RECODE, they might just rezone properties at the outset. But other than that, any of the new districts aren't going to exist anywhere, so they would have to go before this body and before county council, before they.
So like the RSF-40, which is replacing RC-1, you're still going to be currently RC-1?
No, those are renaming.
Those are automatic renames, okay.
Yeah.
Who dictates or says what active is?
Yeah, I think there's some language in there. It's probably a little, there's some, but it might be a little vague, and if we can ask them about that. The intent is clear, so, but, yeah, that is a vague term. You could have someone say, oh, well, you know, it's active in my opinion.
Well, right, or, I mean, you know, and before you put in a business, you could hope it's going to be active.
Right.
You don't necessarily know.
Yeah, cupcakes might go out of fashion, you know.
Right, exactly. I mean, you know, people's tastes change in a lot of ways, so I was just wondering if they were specific.
Yeah. And the default answer for that question is broadly applied to anything in the zoning code, is it's up to the zoning administrator. And, you know, she doesn't make decisions in the vacuum. We talk about it in staff, when there's a big question, and we'll, you know, spitball what some of the solutions on the interpretation might be. So that's the default answer, but if there's some obvious vagueness that we can get rid of, we can try.
Changing TND to Baxter Village, so you're not expecting anybody's going to want to come in and do something similar to Baxter?
I doubt it. Nobody ever, nobody ever has since the Baxter came forward. And it was done for them, it was created for Baxter Village, the whole district was, and no one's ever.
It was hugely popular and grew so quickly, I'm so, I was just thinking, if another developer wanted to come in.
And we could probably.
Has anyone proposed?
We had one person who was looking at it at one point. There was one developer that was looking at it, and they just couldn't make it work. And I think having the mixed-use district, we'd be able to achieve that same sort of development in a different district.
Yeah. And that's the thing about the TND, is it's so, you know, it's page after page after page, it's a page of regulation, and it works for Baxter because they wrote it. It's largely impossible for others to take that exactly.
So then they, somebody could do a similar type of development, but it would have to be mixed use.
Yeah.
But the mixed use, you can't have that much single family as you do in Baxter.
You wouldn't have as much as you had in Baxter, if that's correct.
Is there a reason we're limiting the number of single family, but not limiting the number of multifamily in something like that? Because I mean, I'm looking at Baxter, it was hugely successful. If somebody wanted a little more single family in a large mixed-use development like a Baxter, they can't use the mixed-use plan, because you're limiting the number of single family, but not the number of multi. It just, it seems odd that you would say you can't have more than 50% of single family if you're doing residential.
Yeah. I think that's because traditionally, in a mixed-use district, they are driven by multifamily residential. It's more difficult, but not impossible, to make single family work. So that's why single family is still allowed in what the consultants has proposed for mixed use, but you want to cap it to some extent, so that it's not just another suburban neighborhood. It also has a component where people can readily access a lot of the other non-residential uses that are there. But I mean, theoretically, there's no reason we couldn't cap multifamily as well.
Yeah, just, you know, cap residential use.
Right. And I don't see a need to.
And that breakdown can be, you know.
Yes, and there is a cap to the residential uses, and that is because you need to have a minimum of 30% of the land area before non-residential. So your cap is 70% residential therefore.
I mean, but it's not that I think there needs to be a cap on multifamily, because a lot of those types of development are kind of geared towards townhomes and things like that, which is fine. But I just don't understand why there's a cap on single family if somebody wanted to do something, again, more akin to a Baxter or their own plan.
I think what we'll get then, if somebody wants to do really a single-family neighborhood and throw in some commercial, and we really aren't getting what that mixed use is. So imagine things like Brayden, where that's a PD, and they have just that small amount of commercial. So imagine things like Brayden, where that's a PD and they have just that small amount of commercial. Well, in reality, that is a neighborhood of single-family homes. It just happened to throw in a couple of acres for a commercial. So we want to be able to cap it so you don't just call it mixed use, and really all you're doing is creating a more single-family.
That's what the thirty percent non-residential kind of requires that. I don't know, it's just, it was odd to me that...
And these mixed-use districts, when people try to rezone, you know, they're going to have to match that district to the future land use map. And those are really going to be around the nodes. So they're already limited to where they can go. And you really don't want to have too much single-family located in the nodes because that defeats the whole purpose of the network. Anything else on those? So next, we'll talk about the overlay districts. So a little bit easier to get through this stuff. So there are some existing overlays that don't need to be overlapped. So those are the abandoned cemeteries, arterial roads development, and the Lake Wiley Catawba River buffers. So the consultant has proposed to consolidate all of the existing language that are in those overlays into the rest of the code. So both it, part three of the zoning code and buffers and screening, and then some of it to transition to the land development code, which is chapter one fifty-four, the today's subdivision code. And a couple of overlays are getting some minor tweaks, some updating. And that includes the airport overlay and the transportation corridor preservation. So that's the pennies overlay. So those are just getting some minor tweaks. Overlays that are getting, you know, a little bit more substantial update are the historic sites. They are currently working on that. The language that we have right now is, it just applies to AGC and RUD. Obviously, the county's got a lot of historic structures out there. And the thought was, well, the county could probably do some more when it comes to the historic overlay. So they're currently looking at that right now. The Lake Wiley zoning overlay district, we've done some of that already that you guys have passed on to council. We've asked them to do more. So there will be some additional changes made that will be pursuant to the small area plan that was done, adding some of the recommendations that were in there for that. And there'll be some changes to the scenic overlay as well. So really getting at protecting the scenic view sheds of the county's natural resources that are listed in there. So, you know, the lake and the river, historic Bradsville, properties like that. Or right now, I think it's largely just to keep manufactured homes out of it.
Yeah.
And that's really not much of an overlay. So we want to beef up that protection so those view sheds are protected a lot better. So excluding things like cell phone towers immediately adjacent to that and some of the more onerous industrial uses. So you don't have those as you're driving to these places that you're going to, because they're scenic. Any questions on those? Talking about the legacy district, this is something that is a big decision to make. So if you guys have comments on this, that's very helpful. So today, we have our UD district. And as the slide says here, it's quite often located near the municipalities. And that was because when UD was created, along the municipal borders, there were some potential conflicting land use issues. And the thought was, well, let's allow virtually everything. And so the joke was, UD stands for you decide. And you can see the district allows a hundred and forty different uses and eight special exception uses. So it's a big mess, it's a big problem. Causes problems for the municipalities when, you know, they're doing stuff inside of their borders that are not complementary to what can be built and is built in the county's UD district. And it's problematic for the county because we have no idea to, what to expect for some of those properties that are built. And you can see there's existing neighborhoods next to UD. So the only thing we know that can't go in there is residential. So, you know, there's a lot of industrial uses that could go in there. And that creates a land use conflict, and it's very problematic. So what to do about it is the question. So essentially outlined three different options. Option one is to eliminate UD altogether. So that's the cleanest option, and it's also the most intensive one. So it would remove it from the zoning code, remove it from the zoning map, and all of the properties that are currently zoned UD today would have to be rezoned to something more appropriate. And we would, in the case of an approved property, the consultant would work with us on proposing what the existing use is and what that should be rezoned to. If it's vacant, that becomes a more difficult conversation, but probably try to match it to what's surrounding. So this has been done on a smaller scale with the UD project that came through, and people were allowed to come in and get their UD property rezoned for free. So this would be forcing that to happen for all UD properties county-wide all at once. So that would be just over six thousand acres or one point seven percent of the unincorporated county land area. A second option would be to keep it as a legacy district. So you would maintain not being able to rezone to UD. You would prohibit the expansion of existing UD districts. We really haven't had people ask to expand a UD district, but technically today you can. The other component in there would be, properties could be remain, could remain UD until they went to file for a rezoning application. This happens sometimes today. We had a couple last year.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, a couple went RUD, I think. And it's today largely if someone wants to do residential. That's they have to get a rezoning out of UD. You typically don't get folks rezoning out of UD to do something that they could already do in UD, because that gives them the maximum flexibility. So in that scenario, we would have to consider revising down that list of a hundred and eighty-eight uses. So that we're removing some of the more problematic ones, the ones that create a lot of conflicts. And the third option, which we don't recommend, that the consultant doesn't recommend, but technically it's an option, is to keep it altogether and allow it to be expanded, allow people to rezone into it, but again, change that list of use, that use table so that we're essentially changing UD from what it is today to a different type of district where it's more narrowed down, but we don't know what that purpose might be. So those are the three options. So if you have comments on that, we're happy to take that and give that back to the consultant.
On option one, if you remove it completely, what do the current landowners who would be affected, do they have any say in it? Is it just automatically rezoned on them?
Yeah, that's a good question. County council has the power and authority to rezone any property they want in the entire county. And they don't need the owner's permission to do that, but they do have to notify them. So that's a power that they have through the state. I don't know that it's been exercised all that often.
I don't think they have done that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could see a landowner being, really upset.
So when we went through the, we wanted to change the offering people the opportunity to change in UD and some of the zoning, we didn't cover all the UD areas, we just covered parts of them?
And it was only folks that volunteered?
It was residential only?
Yeah.
Right, because we pulled that use out of that, we went ahead and did that for them, since we did that as a, you know, mechanism to reduce it?
Some of the people were allowed to keep their UDs.
Right, and if they chose not to participate, they weren't forced to it. So a lot of folks decided that either they didn't, couldn't be bothered, or they wanted to maintain their UD because of the variety of uses they can do there. Even if they had a house there, they might saw that as being a redevelopment opportunity, and they kept it UD.
But when we went with option one, would we go back to them and say, hey, you've got to change some of the zoning?
Essentially, yes.
As today, you'll see on the...
I was saying option, I'm thinking option two.
Yeah, and that was our thought, that that's probably the preferred option. Everyone's input agreed. Did you have something else?
Yeah, I was going to say, just for existing properties in UD, would that also apply, like if they wanted to expand their business on there? Would they have to rezone as part of a site line approval?
For which option?
For option two, to prohibit, if somebody has a ten-acre, it's a commercial or light industrial, you know, whatever it is, and they want to expand within that, within their property?
If their use is removed from the table?
Even if it's not just to remove the district. Because isn't the, isn't the goal to wipe UD off the books?
Yes.
So if somebody came in, wanted to expand their property, so like if they did anything that would require some type of approval, they would also have to rezone?
Yeah, so that hasn't been fleshed out yet, because we talked with the consultants about what the options are. And we realize it's a, it's a big decision to make, especially if option one is the preferred route. It's like ripping a Band-Aid off, it's the fastest and quickest, but it's a little painful, so. But the thought is, if to go to option two, then there's some nuance there. So, you know, do we require them to rezone if they're going to expand? Or if they've got vacant property that's UD and they want to put a use on there? Do we make them do that? That's been a thought that's been batted back and forth a little bit. So the thought was to get some feedback from planning, commission, and council on what the preferred route was first, before we start ironing out the details of how that solution is going to work.
One of the details I would definitely say is if we're going to require them, if they want to expand or sell the property and we're going to require them to rezone it, they shouldn't have to pay for that, because we changed the district on them.
And in that instance, the county council would be the applicant, and there wouldn't be any fee for that.
But if it's a, if a landowner goes to sell their property that's UD currently, and it's got a house on it, and people buying it want to keep it as a house, they have to rezone it and they have to pay for it?
Not today, they don't have to do that. So if it's an existing use, it's existing, it's legal non-conforming. So as long as you don't make it bigger and make the non-conformity worse, you can keep indefinitely.
But if they're selling it, they still, they have to rezone it? You can't sell it as a UD property?
You can.
With residence, with residence on it, and they can still use it as a residence?
Yes.
But they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to put an addition on it?
Right.
Because that would expand them.
Yes, and that's why you'll see some rezonings for people just to put an addition on, things like that.
And do they have to pay for the rezoning when they do that?
They do.
They do now.
So that's what I'm saying, is I think if we're going to require people to rezone because we changed the zoning on them, they shouldn't have to pay the... I know the application fee isn't that much, but some of these are, you know, out in the country, mobile homes, things like that, it does become a little onerous on some of the property owners. I don't think that if we were changing the rules on them, we make them pay for our rule change.
That makes sense to me. Yeah, so we'll give that feedback to the consultants, that if there is a trigger to make someone rezone under option two, that it's a good idea to not charge them for that.
I'm just curious, of the six thousand acres, how much of that is vacant? Do we know roughly?
I used to know. I'm not sure anymore. As things have, exactly, as things have changed, you know, they've, they've gone away. But, um, yeah, we used to know that, we could get that information.
If you revise down that list in option two, the one hundred and eighty or forty, or whatever the number is, do they all fit into the business, which are being changed? Yeah, which are being changed, words I can't remember?
The NTD, the Business and Technology District?
Yeah, no. NCOI and GC. Would they, most of them easily fit into, or the new...
Well, that's the thing, is we don't have a, what uses would be pared down yet. So, you know, there'd have to be some thought about, well, what should the UD district be if we're going to keep it and we're going to pare it, the list of uses down as an option? Because that doesn't necessarily have to be the way we go with option two either. So, you know, with Matt suggesting that, you know, if they're going to expand a property, expand a use beyond what they have, change a use, have a use on a site, on a vacant site, and that triggers a rezoning, in that instance, you don't need to pare down the list at all, because essentially, if you're going to do anything, you need to rezone. But in the case that you don't require them to have some sort of trigger to rezone to a different district, then you would have to have a very targeted list of what is this district going to be? What are those uses that are allowed? So right now, you can do virtually anything except for residential, so.
My point that I was going to make was, can we take the properties that are vacant UD, say those are option one, and then... I mean, you would, you know, I mean, I know we're talking with option, but, you know, I just don't see, like, it has to be an all or nothing.
Right.
You know, all the vacant ones, why can't we just rezone, you know? Yeah, that's the...
Somebody on them and they...
Somebody, somebody does on them right now, but they don't have anything on them, so it...
When I rezone or refi, or I'm going to go build this or run that?
I think to Larry's point, the folks that are going to be the most upset about their district change are going to be the folks that make it UD.
Yeah.
Because they have maximum flexibility, they could sell to a massive manufacturing company or warehouse company, they could make big bucks selling their property that way. Whereas the folks that have, they've already developed their property, whether it's a home or another business...
But to the point we're making, is if they come in with something, you make a rezone anyway.
Right. Yep. So it would happen either all at once at the beginning, or as they came in to make proposals as they went.
I think if we go to, to the UD, is like you were saying, is we need to know what's UD going to be? What's it going to be like? And I think it would be helpful to know what is it right, what is it right now? So if we need to go back there and have a look at it and see what are the existing land use on properties that are zoned UD, to get an idea as to, you know, how is it out? How do we shake this tree and what's it going to look like?
Yeah.
And that'll be beneficial for now.
Light industrial, we know there's a bunch of commercial, you know, I mean, that could be, I'm saying, that could be an option. Let's just rezone those toward that. And, you know, the vacant ones, they would have to have rezoned anyway. If it's vacant, you can't, you can't do anything now in UD without rezoning it.
Yeah, but do you want that rezone for you? What if it's rezoned into something that you would never choose?
But it falls, that falls back to the complaint, you couldn't, you know, if it was, if the plan called for, you know, general commercial, you couldn't put ID. You know, that may not be compatible.
But you can now, but you couldn't then. In the future, you wouldn't be able to, but you can do that right now. So they would lose opportunity as their investment of how they wanted to develop that property by doing that.
And then to spell it, you're...
I'm just saying, so right now, if somebody had that, and they wanted to do something that wasn't compatible?
Yeah, if they're currently zoned UD and that use is allowed, if it doesn't meet the confidence of plan, they can still do it, because they have that by right, they can just do that now. So you would not, you would lose that opportunity from somebody who made an investment in that piece of property.
There are a couple really big ones out there.
Yeah.
And those would be your, your folks that would kick it screen.
I mean, I get one is kind of the cleanest, but I think you're going to have the biggest uproar.
I would agree with you.
Yes.
I, I think that one's, you're poking a beehive on that one. I think option two is a little, not option three, I'm definitely not a fan of. But I definitely think there need to be some tweaks in option two to, to protect the landowners who are already UD. I think when you're looking at it, also not just looking at what the current UD is used for, but looking at where the remaining undeveloped UD is and what's around it when you're paring down the uses. Because if most of it is next to neighborhoods like you were showing, then, you know, look at your uses, okay, the majority of UD is either rural or around neighborhoods. What uses would fit that to complement the current surroundings?
Any other thoughts on UD?
I'm confused, if it's zoned UD now, and it's nothing there, they can't build anything there without getting it readied on? They can't build anything?
They can, but that's potentially the scenario that would unfold in, in option two.
Right now, they can build anything except a residence.
And that's what I thought, but I...
And then option two, you pare down from a hundred and forty down to, say, forty uses. And if they fall within those forty uses, no harm, no foul, they do whatever they're going to do. If they fall within the hundred that got eliminated, now they're unhappy.
So we're going to eliminate some of the uses for UD? Like about a hundred and forty now, we're going to cut that way down?
That could be one of the...
Because the overall goal, the overall goal is to eliminate...
So if the goal is to eliminate, as Matt said earlier, then the preferred route is to have some trigger to force them to rezone. You know, you could be as harsh as, if you do anything, you have to rezone. But there's some, some middle ground in there.
So what you're suggesting is, when they cut it down to forty, that they cut it down to things that are compatible with adjacent areas?
Properties, yeah, as much as you can.
So this one's easy?
20 or 10.
The tax districts, we have four of them that for some reason are in chapter 155. They're not related to zoning whatsoever, so the proposal is to relocate these to an appropriate code chapter for the code of ordinances. The use table is getting a facelift. Right now, we're just working through with a consultant about which uses should fall in the new districts, looking at the current list of uses, the layout and all of that. So this is what the use table looks like today. When module one is completely, probably won't have the full color version quite done yet, but that's the intent, is to, to make it look attractive, easy to understand, easy to find, find the district and the use that you, you're interested in. And that's not the case today. So the proposed use table, there is a scale of approval that'll be on there. So if it's permitted, it'll show a P. If it's conditional, if it's got the conditions associated with it, there'll be a C in that box, and if it requires a special exception, there'll be an S E. So as you can see here, you've already got the P and the S E, but then you have this weird column over here. It says supplemental regulations, question mark? And then yes there. So instead of having that, if there are supplemental regulations for permitted use, it'll be a C in that box instead. And a lot of these special exceptions will have conditions as well. So there is a major consolidation of similar uses in the use table. There's a lot of older stuff that doesn't make sense, a lot of sense to separate out. So right now, the existing use table has roughly 216 uses in it. And what they've come up with so far, even including new uses, is down to 185. So they pared down that quite a bit. So some of the major consolidation is outdoor and indoor recreation. There's no need to list out all the different types of indoor recreation and outdoor recreation because those are essentially limitless. You know, are we going to have recreation? Is it going to be indoors or outdoors? Those are the primary things that we are concerned about. There are some, like a racetrack and things like that, that are different enough to identify as a distinct use from the rest, and they've maintained that. So restaurants, there's a lot of different categories of that as well, so they consolidated a lot of that. A lot of the consumer retail as well. They don't care whether you're selling flowers or hats or, you know, what you're selling, but you are selling something is the more important thing. Similarly, for personal care and personal services. So those are all things that you might go to get your taxes done, you might go to get your nails done. So a lot of those things, you're essentially going to a location to get a service done. So there's, there's not a whole lot of need to separate out what those different services might be. Also, the same for offices. There's been a lot of consolidation for those uses. And special interest schools, so karate or learning an instrument, those locations, you're being taught something, a skill, something useful. So that's a special interest school. So they have proposed adding about 60 uses that are not currently in the table. So for the residential aspect, adding triplexes, quadplexes, tiny houses, and upper story residential. Those are not in the code today. There've been a lot of unique industrial codes that they've proposed adding, so that captures more of what industry is doing today that we don't necessarily have identified. Some of the additional examples are community residences, farmer market, farm, farmers markets, drive-in theaters, short-term rentals, tattoo studios. Those are things that are not in the use table today, therefore not permitted, but those are being defined and added in the table as they've proposed. So any questions on, on that?
Ready, drive-in theaters, room?
Yeah.
Kings Mountain?
King Run, yeah.
And we've actually fielded phone calls since COVID happened that people are interested in bringing them back?
It does, it does.
Yeah, there's a campground next to it. There's one in Shelby.
One of my favorite things in my.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, there's just another one, yeah.
Belmont has one too.
Those are the two that I know of.
Belmont. I think they have one in Belmont too.
Do they have one? I have no one in Belmont. I've been to one in Shelby and Kings Mountain, but. The tri-quad and tiny house, is that looking at like RMX six? Is that kind of what that's geared for? I mean, where would that fit?
Tiny houses, I.
Yeah, the tiny houses.
I think they had it in, I forget, all the districts probably.
I think they are in all the districts.
All the districts for tiny houses.
There are additional use regulations for, for tiny houses coming as well. So you can't just do a tiny house anywhere you want. And so there's some additional regulations that will come.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out, looking at the new residential, that's all residential, so looking at the new residential zoning, where are those items would fit?
Yeah, and I think triplex and quadplex will be in 10, but not 20, and also 6.
And 6.
Upper story residential, I think, is limited to some of the commercial districts and special districts where it makes sense to have upper story residential. And all of those new residential uses will have use regulations added to them.
I know tiny houses has been pushed around here for a long time.
Yeah.
They look great, but good God, try and live in one.
Diane's going to retire in one.
I'm trying one.
You have to go for a cabin, but.
Just got to put all yourself in a self, self-storage facility.
Get rid of it.
Get rid of it. Your shed is bigger than your house.
All right, so today we have that handy-dandy language in the zoning code that says if a use is not defined herein, it shall not be permitted. So that is a unique animal to the rest of the country. It's not really a thing in zoning. So the proposal is to get rid of that. It creates a lot of problems. And I am proposing something. It's not specifically listed in the zoning code, so it's impossible for me to do it unless I get counsel to amend the whole zoning code to allow me to do this particular use. So there'll be provision in there, provisions in there, which virtually every other jurisdiction has, where the zoning administrator can make a determination about, you know, this use isn't defined currently, but it is most similar in intensity and characteristic to this use. Therefore, all the standards apply to this use as well. And it can be, it needs to follow this process to get approved. And my favorite example that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, when I was at Fairfax County, there was an interpretation that a hookah bar was most similar to an indoor shooting range. I'm not sure. I'm not sure how that worked out, but, yeah. I had problems. Anytime somebody applied for a hookah bar, like, listen, you have to go through the special exception for a shooting range. It doesn't make sense, I know, but that's what's been said. So there's some language in there. Some of this is existing today, but just wanted to go over this as well, that there are use and district separation requirements for some uses. And some of the new ones have been added to this as well, so things like adult uses, alternative lending, so that's your payday loan facilities and things like that, drive-in theaters, outdoor shooting ranges, racetracks, tattoo and piercing. So you want to have distance separated from protected uses and from each other in some instances because you don't want to cluster some of the more negative uses, and you also want to have them a certain distance. For example, you don't want to have your adult uses next to schools. So you want to have use separation there.
Do we have outdoor shooting ranges?
I believe so, yeah.
You know where?
There is one down off of.
I think it's.
Water Road.
Is it one over there?
I don't know, one, I think, probably, yeah, like what you were saying, I don't know.
I know it's in a sign.
I think it's more off of Ottawa.
I think just in New York PD have one in Rock, in City, or the, or maybe it's the opposite. Maybe York County Sheriff has one in, in York.
Yeah, it's one somewhere.
I see a sign.
Is it open to the public?
I don't believe so.
But that doesn't help you.
I think if you go to the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources, they have a list of all the outdoor shooting ranges.
Gason County has one. There's one up there.
Pardon?
Gason County has one, outdoor shooting range.
Sorry, off topic.
That's fine. Some additional tweaks, additions, and consolidations. So based on some feedback from the zoning board, they are proposing equestrian uses to require five acres. I think you can get a special exception to go lower than that today, but that's really not fair to the horses. So that standard is in there now.
Can you just have one horse? Do you would need five acres?
Yes.
No. I mean, that's, I grew up with a horse, I didn't have, I mean, we did have five acres, but there weren't five acre pasture. That just seems.
Well, it says just, that, that's not just to have the horse, that's to.
Equestrian uses.
Yeah, that's to have like a commercial.
But so you could own a horse on less than five acres, if it were agriculture, agriculture?
Um, you could do it in RUD because you can do horses in RUD.
Yeah, so like I said, like.
And you can get a one acre parcel in RUD and have a horse.
You just can't.
You can own a horse, you just can't.
You can't have less than.
Train it.
Right.
Yeah, you can't do anything commercial like that.
But you do for yourself. But you can own a horse on less than five acres.
If you're in RUD.
That's the smallest.
Right.
District, I guess.
It's just if you're using it for a business, you have to have at least five.
This one is a little bit of a change, manufactured homes. Today, it's a little bit scattered on which districts they can go in. And the thought was to simplify that. So the proposal is to allow manufactured homes in AGC, RUD, RSF 40, and RSF 30. So those are the four least dense districts in the county and to require all manufactured homes to be on a lot of at least one acre, if you're going to have just one. There is some consolidation of wineries, breweries, and distilleries. There's a lot of language existing in the code today, and a lot of it's the same. So they, they merged a lot of that. Campground and RV parks, they tweaked that a little bit. Communication towers, they still have a lot of work to do with that because our code language on that is a little bit dated compared to what the federal regulations are, so we need to catch up on that. I've also made some tweaks on outdoor rec in there as well, so you'll see. Questions on those?
Is there a reason we're requiring one acre for manufactured homes?
Yeah, that's typically because they will require septic. And we typically need an acre to do that. Some of the new use conditions that do not exist today, but they've proposed adding some conditions to, to them include cemeteries. And that's, we're not regulating, overly regulating cemeteries or anything, but today, the only way you can have a cemetery is if you are an accessory to a religious institution, a church. So you want to be able to have a cemetery that's not necessarily associated with a church. Manufactured home sales and service, so manufacturing those has some conditions to it. Outdoor kennels, salvage operations, self-storage. Short-term rentals is something that is done in the county today. It is not a defined use in the county today. It's technically not allowed in the county today, but it happens. So the thought is to codify it so that we're saying, yes, you can do it under these type of parameters. So that they're not becoming commercial rental properties, but they can otherwise reasonably be used for, for both and all of those websites. There'll be conditions, as I said earlier, on the tiny homes, triplexes, quadplexes. There's some additional conditions on vehicle sales and service and waste management facilities.
So what types of conditions are we talking about?
Yeah, and that's, I haven't memorized all of them because it's a lot of material, but it, it's mostly.
Self-storage, what would be conditions? I'm just.
Look at Diane printed the whole thing out.
Hey Dix, I knew this was going to happen.
I, I just, you know, I, I know some of them, you know, screening and.
That's a lot of it, yeah. And that thing I just emailed, I sent you that out before this meeting, they're all in there. That's one section that was not included in the email. So that's all through there.
Building orientation, architectural.
Yeah, all very basic.
Yeah, exactly.
And, you know, over the next weeks and months, as you get a chance to go through the document when you've got spare time, and you have questions on things or something doesn't make sense, or you have a different suggestion, do let me know. The last two slides I have in here, first being accessory uses. So in the code today, accessory uses and the subsequent regulation for them is all over the place. So they can be found in the definitions of certain uses. They can be found in the use table themselves and in different base district sections. So rather than have them scattered everywhere, the proposal is to consolidate them all into part four of the zoning code, accessory uses and structures. So you don't need to go looking and hunting, what can I have as an accessory use? It's very simple, you can find it. Some of the, and that's carrying forward a lot of that existing regulation that's just kind of scattered throughout, just putting it in one location. Some of the proposed changes for ADUs, the proposal is to have it be for single-family detached only. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to allow accessory dwelling units on a duplex or on a multifamily property. And also allowing the owner to occupy either the primary dwelling or the accessory dwelling. As folks start to age out, they might need less space. If they've had an accessory dwelling on their property, they'd rather rent out the primary dwelling to a family and live in the AD. That's a very common situation, so add that flexibility in there. There's some clarifications that they made to home occupations. It's very problematic language in there. It's very long. And it's not entirely clear what is and isn't permitted in different locations. So they've made some clarification to that, and they still have some additional work to do that. Their first draft to, to us, we couldn't make heads or tails of it.
Didn't get any better.
Not that we can do that today, but, yeah. And also some additional relation for outdoor retail displays. So this is just basic location standards. You can't have them in your required parking spaces. You can't have them in ADA areas, things like that. No, we don't have that today. Any question, any questions on accessory uses? Final one is on temporary uses. So right now, in our current code, very few of them are identified in the definitions. But in every single one of the base districts, they are expressly stated as being a permitted use. It says you can have temporary uses, but it doesn't say what temporary use is, which is problematic. So what their proposed change to do there is to add in part five, temporary uses and structures, so describe what those are and what they aren't. So stating if you've got a temporary use, if it's defined as a temporary use, you need to get a zoning compliance for that. You can't just do it. So we, we need to be clear about what's exempted from that. So anything that's a non-commercial event on private property, you don't need a zoning compliance for a temporary use. So we're not going to be asking, you know, if you're having a backyard wedding, you don't need to get a zoning compliance for that. Very basic stuff there. So this, the uses that are identified as temporary establishes mobile vending, so that's food trucks. Again, this is something that is not defined in the current code. Food trucks aren't allowed in York County legally, but that's something that people do and we want to allow that. So adding some regulation about, you know, how long they can stay in certain areas and things like that. Also adding lay-down yards. It's obvious when you're developing a site that you're going to have a lay-down yard on the site, but what if you are leasing property across the street and you want to have a lay-down yard there? That's a scenario that's not quite clear.
What is a lay-down yard, sorry?
Yeah, so that's your staging area, so you're going to lay down materials and equipment to do your development. Seasonal sales, this is something we run into all the time. People want to, you know, put up a stand in a RUD property somewhere and sell some produce that they've grown there. Technically, it's not allowed either, but we want to be able to allow that. It makes sense. Folks want to sell Christmas trees and parking lots and pumpkins and that kind of thing. So people do that, so we want to be able to permit that. But we also want to have parameters and that they, someone's not going to take up, someone's required parking and absorb all of it and create an issue where someone's trying to go shopping and they can't park because everyone's flying pumpkins on that lot and that kind of thing. And then also just your typical large special events, so for example, affair. My assumption is we probably get very few of those, but we might get some. And things like if there's, someone's filming a major motion picture somewhere and they're blocking a whole bunch of streets, we'll want them to apply for a permit for that. And that's going to start doing that, just coordinate with the sheriffs. So any questions on the temporarys? Let me get to the timeline. Okay. And just a refresher of the timeline. We are in that first gray virus-looking thing that says module one there, so we're going. Yeah, that's right. Take a look at that, that type of graphic, right? So we're going through those districts, the uses, right now. I'll present this largely the same presentation. I'll present this, largely this same presentation, the council will get some of their feedback, and then the consultant will be able to utilize that feedback and make some final changes to module one before they move on to module two, which we get into development standards and non-conformities, how we handle properties that don't conform, all from today's non-conformities, and also any non-conformities that we're going to create by having changed regulation. So that's very important as well. So that should be coming in the next couple of months, and then we'll get deeper into the final two modules. And we should have final drafts towards the end of the summer, and hopefully we'll be into the adoption schedule and have this in the books by the end of the year. That's the goal. Any questions on that? Well, thank you all for coming out, we appreciate the feedback, it's very helpful.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Second, all in favor?
You. Shoot, I'll probably haul away for you, we're still on highway.
Stay long. Does the one way you have to be long?
Draw a line. A real nice place with 300 cars, a hard rock, probably like 40, 50, 60, 70.